So we're going to get started this evening with a study session presentation on worker cooperative business model. And I don't know, City Manager, if you want to start, or we can, I can introduce the Mr. Kirk Vartan.
We could just hop into the presentation.
Okay, let's hop. Welcome, Mr. Vartan.[19.02][19.02](APPLAUSE). All right, I'll clap, too. All right, very good. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, City Staff, and a number of people from the audience in the community here. I wanted to take a quick moment just to recognize the contributors and people that are participating in this session, as well as people that contributed to this presentation. The U.S. Federation of Worker Cooperatives. When you see us, just kind of wave your hand if you're around. Democracy at Work Institute, the Arizmendi Association of Cooperatives, Network of Bay Area Cooperatives, TeamWorks, Human Agenda, Sustainable Economies Law Center, Niles Pie, of course, your own slice of New York, Snap Fitness 24, Project Equity, and Smart Yards Cooperative. So just thank you so much for taking the time to participate in this. I'd also like to recognize a couple of people that I saw here, or they're representing Congressman O'Connell's office, Senator Wykowski's office, Supervisor Chavez, Sunnyvale Councilmember Nancy Smith. I'm not sure if I hit everybody, but those are the ones I saw, and I appreciate them taking the time here. We have representation from the East Bay, San Francisco, even down to Santa Cruz. So thank you all. I just felt it was really important to honor the time and energy supporting your efforts. And so, thank you. So I'd like to start, this is a slide from, you know, kind of Don Whedon's idea. I want to tell you what you're going to get before you actually get it. So the goals for today, hopefully, is a working knowledge of what the worker cooperative business model is, to learn how other cities have engaged in the worker cooperative business model and employee ownership, specifically Berkeley, we're going to give an example, and then provide specific examples on how Santa Clara can support employee ownership. Quick intro of what worker cooperatives, or what cooperatives are in general. I think we're familiar with the Consumer Cooperative, REI. If anyone's at REI, it's a consumer cooperative, producer cooperatives. You have one right here in California, a big one, California Dairies. And the Mission City Financial Federal Credit Union is a financial cooperative. And it really struck me, this was started by Santa Clara employees back in 1959 with a simple mission of people helping people. So right here, you guys started a cooperative, a financial cooperative, right here in Santa Clara, which is really, really cool. But we're here today to talk about the worker cooperative model, and some of the organizations that support that, and the organizations that help encourage that use. And so we'll dive right into that. The biggest thing that I can share about worker cooperatives, and that really distinguishes them, is it's a democratic organization, based on the democratic principles of one person, one vote. So in a representative democracy, it is the essence of what a representative democracy is. And typically, the organization has a board of directors, where you have the members electing those board to represent their interests in a governance model, similar like a local government would have their city council. They have their own board that represents the interests of the organization. And it's different from a typical share-based organization, where you have, the more shares you have, the more control or power you have. Here, again, it's one person, one vote. There is no one supreme power in a democratic-run organization of a worker cooperative. So worker cooperatives are not new. They may seem new to us because we don't see a lot of them here in the area, but they've been around for quite some time. They have managers, they have structure, it doesn't affect the operations, it's nothing about, you have, everybody has to make a decision together to actually do something like to make a pizza. That's not how it works. You have regular operations, just like you normally would. The difference is, is you have governance that's governed by the members, and they represent the members' best interest. So it's not a fringe operation, it's not a kind of a hippie thing that's only, what happened in the '60s with only ag, which is very popular with cooperatives. It has a lot of basic roots of current business fundamentals. But again, the major piece is transparency and employee priority. So with that, we're going to have a couple of people present to you, and we're going to slide through the presentation.
Great, and we'll save our questions to the end, if that's okay.
Yeah.
For the flow of the presentation.
That is okay, we want to keep the flow going.
Yes.
All right.
The flow, yes. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Gilmore, Councilmembers, City Staff, and allies and supporters of the cooperative model. It's great to be here tonight. I'm going to talk with you a little bit about something we call the Silver Tsunami, otherwise known as the Baby Boomer Retirement Wave. So as most of us probably know, it's about 10,000 baby boomers who are retiring every day at this point. This wave has begun and will continue for another 15 or so years. We hear a lot about the implications of this major demographic shift for healthcare, for example. We hear about an aging population, the needs for home healthcare, the impact on long-term care institutions, social security. What we don't hear a lot about is the impact on our economy. So Project Equity, my organization, did some research using census data, and found that there are 2.34 million businesses owned by baby boomers that have employees. So that's not including the 5 million or so sole proprietorships. It turns out also that these businesses employ 25 million people. And when I first saw that number, I didn't know how to put it in context, so I looked up how many jobs are there in the United States. It turns out it's about 150 million jobs total. So baby boomer-owned businesses employ about 1 in 6 workers in our economy. So a very, very important part of the economy. And this creates a challenge, because these businesses are either going to close or change hands. They represent trillions of dollars of business value, they employ 1 in 6 workers, and most of these business owners, an estimated 85%, are human beings and don't plan as well for the future as they should. So about 85% of them do not have succession plans. So what does this mean? What are the local implications of this? Today, only about 15% of family-owned businesses pass on to the next generation, actually have a successor. So 20 years ago, that was about 30%. And we tend to think, oh, it's going to pass on to the kids. But that's actually not an option for most family-owned businesses today. Because of that, about 6 in 10 business owners say that they plan to sell their business in the next decade. That means we're undergoing a massive shift in our business landscape. We've also seen data that between 20 and 30%, depending on who you ask, of businesses that are listed for sale actually end up selling. So that's also not as easy a path as you anticipate. So for those that do sell, they'll often sell to an out-of-area buyer, a competitor, which a lot of business owners aren't thrilled about, or a larger, more corporate entity. And that often means, a merger and acquisition situation sometimes means that they'll break up the business or close it down, or often layoffs are involved. The alternative for many is actually businesses closing. So if we had more time, I could share examples from throughout the Bay Area. I'm sure you've all seen them yourselves. Taking a look at what this means in the Bay Area, baby boomers own about half of all privately held companies. And in Santa Clara County, it's more than 15,000 businesses that employ almost 160,000 people. So that's quite a few jobs in your county, in this county. And the payroll there is almost $9 billion. So that's the scope of the issue that we're looking at. One solution is to convert, for these businesses to convert to worker cooperatives, or other forms of employee-owned businesses. Essentially, this means that the business owner can sell to somebody right under their nose, or someone they've worked with day-to-day, to a group of people that have helped them build their business. We just met Kirk, and will later meet Ren from A Slice of New York, which became a worker cooperative in 2017. In a minute, we'll meet Carolyn Burke from Niles Pie Company. I had the pleasure of working with both of these companies for more than a year, as they transitioned to become worker co-ops. And so those are two examples we're going to hear about personally today. There's also others throughout the Bay Area and other industries. So Adams &amp; Chittenden is actually a manufacturing company. They blow scientific glass at a small factory in West Berkeley. They just completed their conversion to a worker cooperative last week, on July 3rd. Yay![552.16][552.16](LAUGHS). My colleagues were able to enjoy cupcakes and champagne with them, which was nice. And California Solar Electric Cooperative is a solar installation company. There are actually many worker cooperatives in the solar installation field. And CalSolar is up in Grass Valley. They'll be joining the ranks in a few months. Feed Sonoma is part of the food arena, but they work on distribution of locally grown organic produce from small farmers in Sonoma County, and they bring it throughout the Bay Area for folks like us to enjoy. So those are other local examples of companies that are converting to cooperatives currently. It's also happening around the country. So the three businesses in the upper right here are local retail businesses on a small island off the coast of Maine. The elderly company that built, I'm sorry, the elderly couple that built these businesses over decades wanted to sell them a few years back and couldn't find a buyer. So there wasn't anyone on the island who wanted to step in, there wasn't anyone who wanted to move to this remote island to buy these companies. So they ended up converting them to a single cooperative called Island Employee Cooperative, with about 50 worker owners. In Chicago, we have Nuera Windows Cooperative, another manufacturing company. In the Twin Cities, we have Happy Earth Cleaning Service, which is in the process of becoming a worker cooperative right now. Estimated conversion date will be later this year. And they're in good company here in the Bay Area, where there are many actually worker-owned cooperative cleaning businesses, and TeamWorks is represented here tonight. So it's happening in all industries and across the country. So I'm going to wrap up this section by just speaking a little bit to why business owners choose to make this transition. At Project Equity, we talk to hundreds of business owners every year, and my colleague Donna Sky, who's here, takes many of those calls herself. And the reasons that we're hearing from them, many people look at it as an exit strategy, whether it's because they're retiring, or because they're a serial entrepreneur. We have many of those here in Silicon Valley. Another, in the case of Feed Sonoma, for example, is a good example. Shared ownership or cooperative ownership is a nice extension of the business's mission. So for Feed Sonoma, it's about supporting organic agriculture. So why shouldn't the farmers and the people who help distribute that produce share in ownership? In other cases, it's a wealth-building opportunity for employees. And for example, I hope you'll hear a little bit tonight about how A Slice of New York and Niles Pie, like many worker cooperatives, since they converted, they have shared substantial profits with their employees. Very inspiring. So that's critically important, especially in a low-wage sector here in the Bay Area, where we know the cost of living is so high. And finally, because it's good business. So there's a lot of data, actually, now, both anecdotal and from rigorous studies that show that employee-owned businesses and cooperatives survive longer, are actually more productive after they become, introduce employee ownership, and weather economic storms more effectively and are much less likely to do layoffs. So there's many reasons that this is a socially beneficial business model, and many reasons that business owners are considering it. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to my friend and colleague Carolyn Burke of Niles Pie Company.
Thank you. Welcome, Carolyn.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for taking on this topic. It's really timely and very important. So my name is Carolyn Burke. I am the founding owner of Niles Pie Company. And just a quick, a little bit about who we are and how we came to be, and how we got to the point where we are, where we're now a worker co-op. We've been in business for almost nine years, and we've been in our retail shop for just over six years now. And we became a worker co-op two years ago, for a number of reasons, all of which Hillary talked about. And I'll speak to a couple of them. Primarily, we started thinking about it as a way to control our growth and deal with our business growing so fast. We started, we had, the first four years, we had 20%, 25% growth every year. And for a small business, that's really hard to handle. But the reality of a small retail food business is that there isn't a lot of money to bring in outside help, and to hire management, and to develop business lines. But as I looked around the business, realized that we had the talent already. We had dedicated staff who knew what they were doing, knew the business inside out, and really cared. So it was a way to handle our growth and expanding without changing our entire staff structure. The other reason, too, is that it's really hard to live in the Bay Area. It's really hard to pay people enough in a really low-wage service industry. And we were having enormous staff turnover from people needing two, three jobs, people needing to leave the area. So we were trying to figure out how to keep staff and how to compensate them better. So part of that compensation is financial, with profit sharing, and the other part is with decision-making, and compensating by making the job itself more meaningful and more powerful, so that when you are working there as an owner, you're learning financial skills, you're learning management skills, leadership skills, and organizational management skills. So it is on-the-job training for wherever you go next. And what we found is, we're actually creating jobs for people who are then more embedded in their communities. Worker co-ops create workers who are then more apt to be part of the local political establishment, they're more likely to be involved in issues that are going on, because they have more knowledge about how things work and how the business works. It's been pretty empowering and pretty exciting in the last two years to see how we've grown that way. And the other, the last reason for us, too, was as an exit strategy. When Niles Pie began, we actually started, our first two years, it was just me as a sole proprietorship with a couple of interns and any neighbor I could wrangle into helping. And then we had an online business, and worked at a rented kitchen space, and, you know, had a couple of local pickup locations. And I really did not want to go back into retail, and swore I would never do it, because the last time I did it, I worked myself silly for five years, and didn't really have an exit plan. I didn't have a succession plan. And when the time came for me to need to exit the business, I didn't have any way to pass it on to anybody. And it was a small business. I finally did find a buyer, and I felt like I was really lucky to get out of it with my shirt. But the moral of the story for me was, never do that again. Don't create a business that has to rely on the owner to constantly work and not have any way to pass it on. So when we started intentionally, I structured the business in a way that everybody was part of the conversation. So when we started looking, a couple of years in, when we started looking into what to do, we already had staff who were engaged and knew more about the financials and about how the business itself runs. So it put us in a good position to be able to really have a conversation about ownership, and having our staff become more involved in governance decisions, about how to make decisions about how to add farmers' markets, how to buy a new vehicle, what direction we want to go, how we negotiate a new lease, things that are more key to the overall strategy of the business, as opposed to just how to make pies and how to figure out how to sell them to people. So from all aspects, I feel like becoming a worker cooperative really has set our business on a path to stability. And in five years, when our next lease comes up, we'll have people who know how to handle it, and know how to pass it on, how to hire people, how to train them, how to keep the entire train moving, and stay in our community. So I really support this effort, and really thank Kirk and everybody else for taking this next step, and engaging our local municipalities and supporting it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to bring Hillary back up.
Hello again. So I have the honor of standing in for my colleague Zen Trenholm of the Democracy at Work Institute, who was planning to be here tonight and apparently is not feeling well. So I'm going to present some of the information he was going to speak to. And I realized I probably should have introduced myself before. My name is Hillary Abell. I co-founded a nonprofit called Project Equity. We're based here in the Bay Area in Oakland, and work throughout the country, but especially with companies here in the Bay Area and in Southern California currently. And our work is educating the public, connecting with businesses, helping businesses explore and then implement transitions to worker co-ops and other forms of employee ownership. And we also partner with city governments to do that kind of awareness raising. So I'm going to speak on Zen's behalf, a little bit about what city governments are doing around the country right now. So Ricardo is going to speak in a moment more about what's been going on in Berkeley, but they are not the first, and they're not the only one. So to give some examples about how city governments have engaged with the worker cooperative business model and are currently engaging, there are three categories that Zen grouped these under. The first is addressing the small business closure risk that I spoke about earlier. So Boston is doing that by integrating employee ownership into their Office of Economic Development. And that includes offering technical assistance to worker cooperatives, and making it easier for worker cooperatives to access loans. The City of Miami is funding three local groups to learn how to provide technical assistance to businesses exploring this cooperative model. They also amended a CDBG-funded loan program to make it easier to finance cooperative conversions. And they'll soon launch an awareness-raising and business outreach campaign, actually, with us, with my colleague Patty in Miami, to do outreach with the city and the county throughout that part of Southern Florida. Finally, here in California, there's a lot of interesting stuff happening in Southern California, in Long Beach, and also in Los Angeles itself. So the Economic and Workforce Development Department has worked with a group called Concerned Capital to use layoff aversion funds through the Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act. So it's kind of a hidden piece that not a lot of folks are aware of, where within WIOA, there's a mandate for public agencies to create opportunities for small business development and to avoid layoffs and business closures. And that money can actually be used for feasibility studies or other purposes that the City of LA has been doing some education around. And LA Council District 9 is actually working with my colleague Evan in LA on a data study of manufacturing businesses that are owned by baby boomers that may be at risk for closure, and an awareness-raising campaign that will follow. A second reason that a lot of cities are taking a look at this is to address the racial wealth gap. So I'm sure we're all aware that we have a pretty dire income gap in our country, as well as a wealth gap, and that that is particularly bad across racial lines. And that's gotten worse since the Great Recession, to the tune that now, yeah, I think the statistic I want to share is that white families have 13 times the wealth of African-American families in this country. So the racial wealth gap is very severe. Cities understandably are concerned about that. The City of Cleveland has used strong relationships with anchor institutions there to support large worker cooperatives that are rooted in and employing people from lower-income communities in Cleveland to do procurement contracts. So that's an interesting initiative that's been underway for some time. The City of Durham has a new initiative to preserve legacy black-owned businesses by helping them learn about transitioning to employee ownership as a way to move on into the next generation. And the City of Madison reacted to a report that showed that their racial equity dynamics were much poorer than they realized within the City of Madison. And one of their responses is to develop a worker cooperative initiative, multimillion-dollar initiative, that includes both loans and a technical assistance and cooperative development program. And the final reason I want to highlight is addressing immigrant employment. That's a theme in the City of New York, where they're now in the fourth year of a city-funded initiative, to the tune of $1 or $2 million a year, I believe, that stimulates the creation of new worker cooperatives, and many of those are in immigrant workforces. Philadelphia has an interesting program, working with commercial corridor managers, specifically to do outreach to immigrant-owned and other vulnerable small businesses, and looking at cooperative transitions. Finally, the City of Minneapolis has done an interesting effort. They're doing an inventory of worker cooperatives in their city. They actually have a good number of them. There's a long cooperative history in the Upper Midwest. And they have a program called CTAF, Cooperative Technical Assistance Program, that's quite unique. It builds on their business technical assistance program, and layers on cooperative elements of business support. There's also a fellowship there for cooperative entrepreneurs who are immigrants and people of color. And finally, there's a local organization called Nexus Community Partners, that's developing a new cooperative development initiative, and partnering with Project Equity on a conversion strategy in both of the Twin Cities. So those are some examples, and I'll just conclude by kind of summarizing some of the ways that these cities and others are promoting worker cooperatives. One is through doing market research on legacy businesses. And the way that Project Equity defines that is businesses that are 20 years or older. That's kind of a proxy for being likely to have an older business owner, especially if you're 30 or 40 years or older. And those are ones that may be at risk for closure. We often pair that with research and then PR efforts to raise awareness broadly in the community and start to reach business owners. And then direct business outreach is part of what we did in Berkeley. And my colleague Donna Sky, who's here tonight, actually mailed letters from the city and did calls to hundreds of business owners, and that's resulted in three city subsidized feasibility studies that we're currently undertaking with Berkeley businesses. So that's actually number three, the technical assistance grants, is part of the way that Berkeley has been supporting worker cooperative assessments and conversions. Amending existing loan programs, we've referred to that. And then just also, you know, inventorying other city services that are available, and seeing how they can be made more accessible to, or more appropriate for cooperative businesses. And that's it for me. Thank you very much. And I'd like to introduce Sue Lopez with the Arizmendi Association.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you so much. First, I want to echo my co-op friends behind me, and thank Mayor Gilmore and the council here for allowing us to come to you with ideas to further the cooperative movement as a potential solution to some of the problems that our communities are facing. My name is Sue Lopez, and I am one of the founding members of the Second Arizmendi Bakery. The Arizmendi Association is a family of businesses in the Bay Area. We compose of five Arizmendis, came out of the cheeseboard, and I'm here to share my personal story, just to give you a little sense of what co-ops mean to the individual. I'm all about, as Kirk had said, we're all about normalizing the idea of cooperatives. You know, co-ops are all over the world. It's not a radical idea, one person, one vote. It's a democratic thing, and nothing's perfect. Co-ops aren't perfect. We fight every day, we argue about everything, our business meetings last forever, and it's just like any other business. But when you have a voice in it, it means a lot more. So I just want to share my story with my Arizmendi, my bakery, that I'm founding member of. Our bakery is turning 19 years this October. I'm one of the founders there. I started on July 1st, so it was my 19th anniversary last week. Out of 19 years, we grow to a group of 21 bakers. You don't have to be experienced to get a job at an Arizmendi, you just have to have the will to do some hard work, get up at 3 o'clock in the morning, and have a voice to speak up at meetings. Out of 21 people, nine of us have been together there since the first year. That is remarkable non-turnover for food businesses. Our wages have shattered wages for food service jobs in the United States. We are highly competitive, sought-after positions, because there is so low turnover within the bakery that I work at, when we have occasionally, once every three years, once every four years, when we're actually hiring, we have, you know, a lot of applicants, and people have to try out, and try out, and try it again, and then we have a probation period. So it's a very, it's a very sought-after job in the food service industry, and we're very proud of that. That's what we've been able to cultivate in that business. Out of those nine, so as I said, we have nine founders that have been there since year one, which is remarkable. Out of the group, we've also been able to kind of stabilize with our high wage, some of these people's lives, so that's quality of life, which is kind of the main thing for co-ops, right? It's quality of life across the board. It might be less for everybody, it's more people getting a little bit more of the piece of the pie, instead of one person making the most. And we have sustained many families, 15 kids in our group, eight homeowners in the Bay Area, out of, you know, 21 workers. That is also a remarkable statistic for a bakery job, you know? That's a really special thing. The quality of life allows for folks to come to work, do their work, work hard, be invested. Their pay is based on, you know, what's coming through the door. We don't do any commercial work, it's all just like foot traffic, we don't do wholesale. So they get profit sharing based on their hard work, and that's where, again, cooperatives, that's the crux of the cooperatives, because your work, kind of, you see that in your profits. So that means something, right? And it puts the pressure on you, your coworkers, it's all like accountability. It's all about that, you're working for that paycheck and for that profit sharing, and you're going to make that business the best, because it comes down to your wallet. And that's, you know, that's what we're all about. So creating a highly competitive, we're not nonprofits, we're for-profit businesses, we're extremely viable, competitive in the market. And the flexibility of being part of a co-op is that if you do a sole proprietorship, like Carolyn was saying, it's really hard to kind of get your life back. You've got to put so much into a sole proprietorship. We got 21 people, we get seven weeks vacation. If I step out the door, I don't think about those folks for seven weeks.[1794.11][1794.11](LAUGHING) I'm gone. You know? If you're running a business and you're an owner, and I'm part-owner of that business, it's it's very rare in a sole proprietorship to be like, "See you in two months." You know, "I'm going to France." But we are able to do that. We're able to sustain that. So, that is something, again, that is very remarkable in the food service business. You can't find food work. Health insurance, paid time off, flexibility with parenthood, and, you know, just, you know, as many animals, children, everybody's covered by health insurance. We've done, we treat ourselves well, and that's what it comes down to. And within that, if we treat ourselves well, we can also, that, you feel that in the community. So, that speaks to our place in the community and what we can give back to the community because we're not going to be a successful business unless we treat the community correct, right? We treat them right, they're going to treat us right, our paycheck's going to be better, we're going to be happier. So, that's what it comes down to. I think that's pretty much all I have to share as far as my experience with Arizmendi. And, you know, I want to thank you again for your time, and there's more Q and A. I'm happy to give you more information about the Arizmendi Association. There's a large website and a film and all sorts of things you can learn about. The group of folks that you're seeing in there are the folks, most of them I've been working with for over two decades. So, thank you for your time again.
Thank you. Ricardo, you're up.
Yeah, okay. Hi, how's it going? My name is Ricardo Nunez. I am the Director of Economic Democracy at the Sustainable Economies Law Center. We're a nonprofit law center based in Oakland, California, that provides legal education, research, advice, and advocacy for just resilient local economies. I'm also the Board President of the U.S. Federation of Worker Cooperatives, which is the national business association of worker-owned and democratically-run businesses around the country, as well as an at-large Board Member for the California Center for Cooperative Development, based in Davis. We heard a lot about different cities, what their initiatives are around supporting this transition to democratic employee ownership, and I'm going to go a little bit deeper into one particular case study of what a city has done to support this, support these initiatives. So, I'm going to be speaking about the city of Berkeley, who has really deepened their commitment to equity, inclusion, and development without displacement, trying to find opportunities to bring economic development to their communities that doesn't displace the existing community members who live there. So, back in... And it'll also give you a little bit of a timeline to see how long this process can take, and that it's not all, we're going to have to solve this in the next six months, but that it does take years. And we, in this room, are ready and willing and committed to be working with you all over the next few years to be doing this work. So, back in February 2016, off the heels of a resolution at the Oakland City Council, Oakland City Council passed a resolution to support the development of more worker-owned businesses in Oakland, Berkeley was inspired. And then, City Council Member and now Mayor Jesse Aragorn decided to take the resolution that we helped craft and the ordinance with a host of policy initiatives to Berkeley. And so, in February 2016, a resolution was passed to support the development of worker cooperatives in Berkeley and directing the City Office of Economic Development to start looking at ways that they could support the conversion of existing businesses, of legacy businesses, to democratic employee ownership. Over the time from 26 February 2016 through 2017, the Law Center with Project Equity and other community-based organizations had a collaborative feedback process with both nonprofits, as well as worker owners and worker cooperatives and advocates of this model, to understand what are the needs that they're facing and what are the things that the city should identify and prioritize when supporting these initiatives. In August of 2018, we started having some small business subcommittee meetings with the city of Berkeley and brought in worker owners to talk with city councilors, to get their stories out and to understand what their needs are as a community, as a business community, with particular interest in shared ownership strategies. Also, in 2018, the Office of Economic Development at Berkeley started working with Project Equity and the Law Center to start doing outreach, mostly led by Project Equity, to do outreach to the business community in Berkeley, to get people to understand that this is an option, that one in three businesses over the next 15 years in Berkeley that would potentially be leaving or nonexistent because of all of these baby boomer businesses, that they had another option to keep those jobs and businesses owned locally. So, even before we had anything pass in Berkeley, any policies or any initiatives, the city already started advising and directing their Office of Economic Development to start doing some business outreach. In February 2019, we had a hearing at Berkeley City Council to talk about all of the different recommendations that we had cultivated over the last year and a half, two years, from the community in Berkeley to push forward in Berkeley, and we gained additional supporters. So, what were some of those policy recommendations that we were pushing for? The first one was access to capital. This was definitely an issue for worker owners and worker cooperatives, both in conversions and startups. Startups needing access to capital that was patient, that they would be able to pay back at a reasonable rate, and also have that longer runway. Because when you're starting a democratically-run business, you're going to need to do a little bit more legwork on how to structure that. How are you going to distribute power and authority in this business instead of a conventional workplace where there's just a boss, and the boss tells you what to do, and then you do it? In a worker cooperative, there needs to be more intentional thought around how to structure these businesses, and so worker cooperatives need a little bit more patient capital to get off the ground. As well as conversions, conversions need access to capital because businesses don't always have excess capital to spend on consultants and supporters and technical assistance providers to help them convert their businesses. So, we advised the city to use their existing revolving loan fund to make it more accessible to worker cooperatives. And in fact, two weeks ago, the revolving loan fund in Berkeley that's stewarded by the Loan Administration Board accepted all of our recommendations to change the personal guarantee requirements. What was it? Oh, to allow for this loan capital to be used for cooperative conversions. They passed all those recommendations, and now it goes back to the City Council for final approval. Budget allocation for technical assistance. So, training, education, outreach, all of that costs time and money. And so, we were advocating the city of Berkeley to fund that outreach, to fund the outreach to the small business community, to let them know that there is opportunity for them to convert. And then, once those businesses become interested, they need to get trained up on, okay, what is a cooperative and how does it operate? And how do you incorporate these things in a staged process so that it can be successful, this conversion? And also, we advocated for accountability and reporting. So, getting the city to actually track the numbers of businesses that they're doing outreach to, as well as providing a report to the City Council about how they're meeting the targets that they've committed to. So, in June, last month, on June 25th, the city of Berkeley committed $100,000 toward this outreach and succession planning towards worker cooperative development, which is really powerful. So, over the next two years, we'll be working with Project Equity, with the Office of Economic Development, with a host of other organizations to target, track, and bring into the fold existing businesses who are looking to worker cooperatives as a succession plan for them, as well as supporting existing businesses that are trying to get started up, that need startup capital, startup resources and training to become a democratically-run worker-owned business. And this isn't only happening in Berkeley. We talked about the different cities, but actually, at the federal level during this time of great tension at the national level, we had an act passed, bipartisan support for the Main Street Employee Ownership Act, which directed the Small Business Administration to start looking at their lending practices and how they could streamline lending practices to democratically-run worker-owned businesses, as well as existing businesses who might be in crisis of closing, to get the support and resources they need to convert and sell to their employees. So, even during this divisive times on the national stage, there was bipartisan support for democratic employee ownership. So, it's not a left thing, it's not a right thing. It's a community, it's an American initiative. So, I'll end with that and pass it on to...
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
We've been waiting for this one. Okay. Hi.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ren, and I have been with A Slice New York for over eight years. My first slide is a collage, not to depict how colorful my hair has become, but to share with you that this company has given me epic windows of opportunity. This growth has led to bigger smiles each year, especially since I became a proud owner and Board Secretary. Becoming an employee-owned cooperative has opened up many opportunities for members and non-members, not only in terms of money, but because work is no longer found only at the front lines of our shops, but can be seen and participated behind the curtains alongside Kirk, myself, and others in the committees that we have built in order to collaborate, engage in dialogue in specific topics, and build blueprint solutions together. One of the best decisions we made was knowing that many employees, like the rest of society, have another job or three. So, we created a system that classifies a 25-hour work week as full-time. This allows folks to benefit from paid time off, sick time, as well as our supplemental healthcare bucket that provides assistance with items such as dental and healthcare checkups and other necessary needs. The benefit of being a cooperative is that it enables owners to help decide what is best for its citizens by directly engaging with them. It keeps us all on the same mission, as it allows for a level of transparency, care, and opportunity for growth within the company to become passionate leaders and owners. It has allowed us to invest into our employees, such as Peter, found up over here in the dusty blue apron. He is an owner, but also our bookkeeper. It led us to work and network outside with Project Equity, who helped us with our cooperative transition, and to work alongside with other famous players such as Niles Pies, Arizmendis, and New Belgium Brewing Company, to share ideas of what works and how to improve business. If we want to see businesses thrive and succeed, it requires an intuitive approach from employees willing to lead and engage within the company due to a work culture that allows them to collaborate and contribute. I say this because giving the opportunity to wear different hats leads to a yearning for education, initiative, and experience, and that it doesn't favor the young or old. Instead, it embraces everyone, just like our newly-inducted owners who all crave success, skills, and responsible future changes. As you can see, we have Anthony over here. He's 19. He's such a great young leader, so much passion in his heart. And we got Jamie over here. She's a recent San Jose State graduate, and now she can finally put her skills from college onto her resume. And of course, we also have the legendary Tony. And it doesn't matter how old you are, everybody can get a little bit of a piece of the pie.
Very good. Thank you.
Oh, goodness. Wow. All right. So, I'm going to bring us home. That was pretty intense to follow. Ren's, you know, I have a couple notes. Like I said, Ren's been with us eight years. He was with us from the beginning of the business development, the cohort. He's been a founding member. He leads committees, and like he says, he's an officer of the company and on the board. Our team right now is about 35, and as you can see here, we have, those are our owners in our company right now. And it's an incredible privilege to help lead this organization with these guys. This particular person here, six years old, this is our grand opening in December 2007, or December 2006. He's six years old, and wait for it, wait for it. There he is. Right? 19, that's Anthony. It's an amazing, amazing story with him. Okay. So, just to wrap up, and I will respect the time here, I know we have a packed agenda. And I just wanted to start with, got to have the ask. The ask is for the city to want to get engaged and get involved. And that action is in your power as a City Council to direct your city staff, the city manager, to really engage and speak with the experts, the local, on the local level. We're here, you heard from Selk, from Project Equity, from Arizmendi, from DAWI, from all these organizations, they're here to help and to make it as easy. There's a lot of information that was shared, and just take a step back and know that it's a lot easier to engage than you think. It just takes a deliberate action, just like Berkeley did a few years ago. So, I have a couple examples of here. These are not things that you need to put into anything tonight by any means. These are just things, just to, I wanted to give you specific examples that you can do that are low-hanging fruit ideas for you to take advantage of. And again, with, we will support your city staff and your city manager, whether it's the Economic Development Officer, whether it's Mr. Kada, or whoever it is, we will work with whoever you put in front of us, and we will make this happen for the city of Santa Clara. And that's really where I want to pause, because I want to leave some time for comments and questions. We have all the experts, or a good chunk of them here, and we can always get back to you with more information. Just so you know, it's in this presentation, I have a couple more slides of available resources and links. I'm not going to dwell on those, just know that they're there.
Are we going to get a copy of this presentation?
You have a copy. I loaded it just before we got here today because of the last minute, because Zen couldn't be with us, they from Democracy Works. All of that stuff is, all this stuff is here. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, let's, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share.
It's been a tremendous presentation. I want to thank all, everyone that was involved in the presentation for sharing all that information with us. This is really a new concept for us. I wish we had this about five to 10 years ago. Maybe we could have saved some of the small businesses that were so important to Santa Clara. But I'm excited about, you know, delving into this and see how we can make this a really, a really, I'd like to see it be a real easy and simple process for a business to not be afraid of it, to really, you know, drill down on how we can, you know, make this work for our city, because we're a city that was founded on small businesses. And so, I'm excited about it, but I'm going to start with the council comments or questions. I'm going to start with Council Member Davis.
So, Kurt, thanks for the cannolis. And Bob Nunez, I got to read this little puppy that you wrote from Berkeley, downloaded this and went through this, so it would give me an idea of what you were going to be hearing about. And so, I just want to say it was an excellent presentation from all of you and you I want a job from, because two months off, I'm in, honey. I mean, you just sold all of us, because I am the silver tsunami. So, I just want to say that the presentation, this is an excellent way, an innovative way to, with our ever-changing small business model out there, it's come, what's it, fruition? And you've gone through the nation, and you also have guidance from the feds, which is very interesting, to say the least. I would like this opportunity to work with the city and our EMC, which is our Economic and Marketing and Communications Committee, that's where this came from. So, I would like to direct that back to that committee and include the Silicon Valley Central Chamber of Commerce, which is our new Chamber of Commerce people, to identify the businesses that you were talking about in our city and to see if they could be part of the cooperative and have a research outreach and educational sessions that you were talking about, so people understand where and how they're going to go, and it's not going to be a horrible process, but they're just going to go through a process. So, seeing that this request to further engage the city, I would like, by consensus of my council, to send it back to the EMC committee and evaluate the staff time needed and the budget needs for a program going forward, so that we can get this puppy moving. And just to say, we are the 2019 number-one city to live in. We are the center of what's possible, so let's make this possible, Mr. Vartan.
I'm going to ask the city attorney, it's a study session, so we don't take any formal action. Do we, if we want to do anything, do we just refer by consensus? I just want a clarification on that.
The Brown Act even allows you to vote to direct the city manager to do something. It's not a problem.
If she made a motion?
You can even do it by a motion. It's not an issue. From a Brown Act standpoint, it's not an issue to direct future action.
Okay.
As long as you're not taking any action tonight.
Okay.
So, you don't have to do it by consensus. You could actually do a motion, or you could, if you just want to say by consensus.
I'd rather do it by a motion.
You want to do motion?
If that's okay. Yeah, so it's, it's placing it on a future agenda. Yeah, so it's, it's placing it on a future agenda of our Economic Development, Marketing, Advertising Committee, whatever it's called.
EMC.
The really long-name committee.
The EMC, yeah.
So could we have that as a motion? Is there a second, just for discussion? And we have a second to get that going.
Okay, so the motion would be to place this agenda item, going back to the EMC for further discussion, and to place an agenda item.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a couple of seconds. All right. Councilmember Watanabe, and then Vice Mayor Mahan.
I just want to reiterate what Councilmember Davis just said. I'm just totally blown away by everybody's presentation tonight. I mean, it's, you have covered every little issue that anybody would ever think about or consider, you know, when wanting to, you know, explore something, you know, this kind of a co-op business. I don't think you left anything out there that anybody would say, wow, you know, you made it very appealing, let's just say it that way. And I think, you know, in this day and age, you know, we're talking about, you know, where we are in government and just what's happening around us. You know, we're in Silicon Valley, you know, people are getting priced out, but this is a way to get people priced in and to keep them there. And, you know, I live in Rivermark, and there are several, you know, small businesses, you know, mom-pop businesses, and I know them, and I know how hard they work, and I would just hate to see those businesses go away. They add so much character to the community. And I have seen one business close, Yo-Yo Sushi, actually, I think is one business that went out because they just decided to retire and leave. And that was a shame, because that was a very popular restaurant. So, you know, those kinds of things, when you see that happening, and to see this alternative, you know, to be able to keep, you know, what people have enjoyed for so long, to keep it going, these are wonderful models that you're demonstrating. So thank you so much for putting this together, and I'm happy to see this going forward, and I'm also on that marketing committee, so even better. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Mahan, and then Councilmember Chahal.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to us, all of you. It's a great team and a great team effort, good presentation. You know, this is really not a new idea. This is an old idea that's sort of being made new again, and maybe it's much more well-known on the East Coast. It's kind of an East Coast model, we're importing it here to the West Coast. But what I like about it is it does allow owner-operated businesses to survive, because when you're a single-person business, as many of you have said, it's almost impossible to sell it. It's almost impossible to get someone to step into your shoes and run the business. So if instead you have a group of people, workers, that are invested in the business, know the business, and can carry it on, so that not one particular person is just that one key person to keep the business alive, then the business can go on and on and benefit, you know, multiple people, not just the single owner, who, when you retire, either sell the business, which as you pointed out is very hard to do, or the business just closes because you retire. So I think it's a good model. You don't need city approval to have these kinds of businesses operating in our city. I mean, anyone can form their business in this way. Legally, there's, you know, methods and groundwork that you do to make them work. I think what the crux of the city's involvement is going to be is to make that financial investment. And I can see it being a model like our Housing Rehabilitation and Loan Committee, where we can consider applicants, where we can make the investment, whether it be in the form of a loan, or grants, or something else, to get these businesses incubating in our city. And the reason that we would do this is because it brings such economic vitality back into our community. For all of these businesses that thrive and continue to thrive for just more than one generation, you know, it brings in tax revenue, it brings in workers with good salaries, with good benefits, that can afford to buy here, live here, et cetera. So there is, our investment would be repaid by these businesses many times over. So I think that's what we really have to consider. It's not the business model. That works, we know it works, but we need to be, as a city, willing to make some sort of monetary, financial investment in these businesses, and let them get carried forward in some manner. So I hope that's the focus of our study, not whether or not these things work, we know they do, but what can the city do to make them work.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Chahal.
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent presentation from each one of you, and thank you for taking initiative and bringing to this level. And, you know, there's a movement, and if we can support this thing going forward, as Vice Mayor mentioned, whichever way we can, that would be great. And some of the highlights, which I will reemphasize, are like quality of life, like each one of the cooperative's workers, the quality of life is much better than what an ordinary, regular food service worker is over there. So that means a lot, not only to you, not to the whole community, it means a lot that somebody's being well-paid, somebody's caring for their job, and quality of life is good. Other thing which is very primary, like industry relations, business relations, human relations. And if you look at this thing, like you being one of the votes out of all of the workers, the industry relations between the organization itself is so good, there will be a minimal problems of industry relations. And thus, again, one of the quality of life and satisfaction working at such a workplace. It's such a nice added bonus for getting this cooperative movement going forward. As you know, human resources are the best resources, and if we can make, human resources part and parcel of every failure or every success, we'll be more successful down the line. Like, there will be some failures down in the path of success, but of course, you will be successful when you make it a very cooperative movement on the, in totality. It gives a very inclusive economic growth to each one of you. Like, you know, we are so much struggling with that 1% of economic growth, 1% at the top is having so much wealth. With this movement, like if we can do something where an ordinary worker, an ordinary people can have the same type of satisfaction and same type of economic growth, it means a lot. And as Sue mentioned, like out of those 21, four homeowners at that level, and all the examples we got today, they are excellent examples. And I think we would be happy to support my councilmembers to, whatever we can do to spread the word around, and as Vice Mayor mentioned, everybody knows it working, but how we can incorporate this in a way that we can extend it to more corporations, like succession plan, like that's one of the best succession plans out of it. So yeah, I appreciate all the presentation, and thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Hardy, do you have any comments?
Just one. I just wanted to say that I think the presentation was a great advertisement to us and to the entire city of what's possible, and I'd love to get the Chamber of Commerce involved in this also, and I love the idea of a perpetual loan situation where we can put in some seed money and that gets paid back, so we have something for the next group. So I think it sounds great.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, city clerk?
Is this working now? Okay, cool. As part of the request to City Manager's Office in studying this, would it be possible to include this as part of the analysis for the future downtown? That maybe some allocation of businesses in the future downtown be worker cooperatives as well? Can that be part of the study?
We can, the motion's to refer it to the Economic Development, Marketing, Advertising Committee, so we can discuss the details of it there. That certainly is an option.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, seeing no other speakers, I just, and I'll ask if any member of the public would like to make a short comment, but I just wanted to say that, thank you Kurt Margrit and your business for coming forward. I know you've been pushing for this for a long, long time, and I think the wait was worth it, and what you put together was a really professional presentation for us to really understand how the worker cooperative really, you know, affects people and your workers. I've noticed in your business, because I've been watching since you started this process, and your employees, not only are you retaining them, but they appear very happy. They have, you know, a stake in the game, their skin in the game, and they're part of the decision-making. It just makes such a difference, where so many businesses are just turning over employees right and left, because how difficult it is to work in this situation. So you're coming up with these ways. I noticed we have, and I think it was mentioned earlier, we have Tom Pike here, who's Chief of Staff for Ro Khanna, and I noticed he was taking notes and pictures of what was going on, because I think that, you know, when it comes to money, Tom, money, Congressman Khanna, and financing, it's not just, it's, as Vice Mayor said, it's the financial investment from the city and maybe from some of our partners. It's also with the city, we can help with the outreach and, you know, to advertise this, and also to assist with the process, because I still say that the process has to be made attractive for business owners, and simple, and attractive, and maybe with financing, that's one of the most important things, financing available for the small businesses. So if we can take it, you know, three-quarters of the way, where a business owner can just come in and say, oh, this is how it's done, and it's all laid out, I think that's more important than anything else. It needs to be simple, and people, because a lot of people, since you started talking about this, have asked me, how does that work? That seems impossible. I can't believe that. But there's living, breathing examples here that you have brought us this evening, and I know Councilmember Davis pulled up the 200-page report from Berkeley, and she was reading it last night. I said, hey, give us a good, you know, Reader's Digest version of that. But I'm excited that we're going to move forward with this and really see what we can do with it. So thank you all so much for bringing this to us. I know we have the rest of our council meeting, and it is going to be a long meeting going forward. Is there any speaker cards on this? If anybody would like to make any comment on this before we vote to send this to our committee, please come forward. You would please, if you would, come to the microphone, so that everyone in television land can hear and see you. Yes.
Thank you. I just want to say that I am a...
You can talk to us forward.
I am a member of the First California Brewery Cooperative. It's called Umanum Brewing, and we are a cooperative, and things are working rather well. So I just wanted to add that that's one more cooperative here that is working well, and we're having fun and doing what we want to do, and that's brew some beer, so.
Okay, I'm going to ask you something now. The Slice of New York brought us some cannolis. Did you bring us anything? Just checking, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Yvette Melendez, I'm Salvadorian, and I wanted to support the co-ops, the great projects here, to share a little bit, I moved to this country 25 years ago with a baby, six months old. Because the co-ops, working with co-ops and developing co-ops, gave me the opportunity to real have my American dream, provide me with a really dignified life, and grown up my son, who's finished college and now working in the communities. So co-ops not only give me power, co-op give me the opportunity to know that inside me I have everything I need to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that with us. Thank you. If there's no one else, then we have a motion and a second on the floor to refer this and Please register your vote.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yeah?
We're voting on placing this agenda item, the worker-coop business model, on a future EDMC committee agenda. How do you cast your vote?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have a date for that next meeting? That would be...
September 18th.
September 18th, and that passes unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you.